And we're recording. Okay, good evening. We call the 372nd meeting of the College Place City Planning Commission to order. Mr. Ritter, will you please make your call?
Mike Quinn?
Here.
Scott Duncan?
Here.
Randall Brandon?
Here.
Eileen Davis?
Here.
Ken Lotterback? Absent. And Dennis Olson?
Here.
Brian Ma?
Here.
We have?
Uh, a, uh, court. Thank you. All right, so consent agenda, I just will start with the approval of the planning most of our last meeting in July 18th, point seventeen. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Thank you.
Brian?
Brian.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Most opposed? Very six zero. And the agenda for August 15th, I am going to recommend that we invert the order of our regular agenda. Do I have to have a motion for that?
Yes, well, I don't know. I don't think it's necessary.
Not necessary? Okay. Any opposition to overturning the order or Mr. Ward being a little late, I understand? Okay, so let's, uh, let's, uh, preview the agenda with the inverted order. We'll start with the broadband small cell webinar and then move on to the signed regulation work, review of the revised act regulations. So do we have a motion for people back, please? Hold up. Have a motion and a second?
Second.
I mean, and who made the motion, was that around there?
Me.
Oh, down there, Dennis, okay.
Thanks. All right. So, Mr. Ritter, we'll start with the broadband cellular.
All right.
Small cell webinar, please.
So, um, the reason for this is that, um, the FCC has made some changes and is recommending that, uh, the use of publicly owned utility poles could be a spot for placing these small cell structures. And the purpose of these new, these structures is to get broadband out there in areas where there's gaps in their networks. I don't know if an area like College Place might be affected by such legislation or changes because we have pretty good coverage here, but as the uses of those bandwidths increases, it's likely that we're gonna see more in the long run. So, uh, this is a webinar that AWC put together. Ogden Murphy Wallace, it's the, that's the firm that's, they have an expertise in the area. They also have, um, there are several Washington cities that have joined this, there's a coalition out there in preparing, in city wall wall, there are members of this coalition in preparation for the potential for upcoming legislation at the state level and just exploring ways to address the issue to be more proactive regarding it. So, um, it's about an hour long, so we'll just go ahead and then, we do have a wireless communication ordinance. We have, our city attorney hasn't looked it over to see if we have gaps, so, uh, I'll be, you know, coming forward in the future. So, we'll go ahead and take a look at this and we can have a discussion afterwards if we want.
Dissipating in this webinar today on this important issue facing cities. AWC presents this educational webinar on small cell technology and the impacts on cities in collaboration with a number of individual cities, Ogden Murphy Wallace Law Firm, Municipal Research and Services, the Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Relations Team, and others. I'm Victoria Lincoln, I'm one of the lobbyists at AWC and I'm the moderator of the webinar today. Technological advancements have translated into telecommunications infrastructure that's getting smaller and smaller. Small cell technology will be used to increase density of service to a growing number of wireless devices and this technology will be the backbone of the 5G system coming in the year 2020. In addition to commercial demand, AT&amp;T recently won a contract to be the nationwide contractor for a new first responder network called FirstNet, which will be an exclusive and attractive, um, network for public safety uses. Cities and other first responder groups will be able to purchase access to this network when it goes online. Buildout is expected to take about five years, but work is already underway. AT&amp;T plans to utilize existing structures first rather than try to build new towers. This means they'll be seeking available structures in and out of the right of way, including all poles, communications towers, water towers, and other structures to hold their facilities. They plan to deploy across the state, not just in the Puget Sound area, in places where people travel, a lot of our transportation corridors, in population areas, in tourist destinations, border areas, rural areas where needed, and tribal land. Our governor needs to decide whether to opt in to the AT&amp;T building out this public safety, um, network, or whether to opt out and create our own plan for deploying the system. The decision will be final by December 19th, uh, AT&amp;T tells me, and after that, we could probably expect a new surge in deployment of the infrastructure. So, between commercial demand for wireless technology and the creation of this first responder network, cities will, or maybe already are, experiencing a flood of new applications to cite small cell infrastructure. It's not just happening in Washington State. You probably are aware, there's been a nationwide effort to change the rules for deploying telecommunications infrastructure in cities. The FCC or the Federal Communications Commission is undergoing the review of their rules regarding speed, cost, and flexibility of infrastructure at the local level, which you're gonna hear more about in this webinar. In addition, more than 30 other state legislatures have bills introduced on this subject this year. The Washington State Legislature had a long and difficult debate about whether to preempt cities and public utility districts in matters of cost and fees, permitting rules for new and existing facilities, timelines, and design. All the proposals on this subject died by the end of this year's session, fortunately, but it is expected that we'll continue to have a debate with the telecommunications industry and legislators in the 2018 legislative session may take, or probably will take this issue up again. So with that, AWC is hosting this webinar and will host other educational opportunities over the coming months to provide background information on this subject and to help you, our cities, prepare for this infrastructure. Doing nothing will not serve the needs of our consumers who want wireless devices. It will not help the industry if we're not prepared and it'll make it harder for us to fend off preemption in the legislature. So, that's my little tip for the morning. I'll turn it now to our speakers, Ilana Zana and Scott Snyder of the Ogden Murphy Wallace Law Firm. They're gonna provide more information for you. And by the way, you can type in questions you may have and there will be a couple of points in the webinar when we're, we're gonna try and answer them. But if we don't answer your specific question, we'll take an inventory of all the remaining questions and get information out to all the participants, uh, after the webinar. And of course, we welcome any suggestions you have about ways we can help you on this subject. So with that, I will turn it over to Ilana and Scott for more information.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for joining us on this webinar. I'm here with my colleague Scott Snyder and we are very excited to be sharing with you what we have been engulfed in for the last eighteen months or so, which is small cells in the state of Washington and nationally. I'm going to start with a bit of an apology. Once I start talking about small cells and macro facilities, I'm going to explain what they look like and it's one of those things that's gonna kind of infect your mind and you're not, you're not gonna be able to unsee this anymore, unfortunately. And so, so as I tell people, as I drive down the I-5 corridor with my husband, I'm constantly pointing out, that's a small cell, that's a small cell, that's a small cell, that's a small cell, or it's a macro cell, that is a tree or a cross. And some are not this guy's at all. So, to the extent that you have not already been able to identify the proliferation of wireless facilities along, say, I-5, I-90, and within your cities, I apologize in advance, you will now start seeing them more often. So with that, let me start by explaining why small cells, um, and how did we get here? So, to begin with, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile, and companies that you're probably less familiar with, like Mobility, Crown Castle, have really been pushing nationally, and as I said, in Washington State, since about January 2016, with this deployment of additional cell facilities. AT&amp;T states in its recent FCC filings.
Appears to have frozen. Is this right there? IT, anyone? Is it in the cloud somewhere or is it in your computer? No, this is on the cloud. Or website.
Try and go back and see if it starts.
Not this guy's at all. So, to the extent that you have not already been able to identify the proliferation of wireless facilities along, say, I-5, I-90, and within your cities, I apologize in advance, you will now start seeing them more often. So with that, let me start by explaining why small cells, um, and how did we get here? So, to begin with, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile, and companies that you're probably less familiar with, like Mobility, Crown Castle, have really been pushing nationally, and as I said, in Washington State, since about January 2016, with this deployment of additional cell facilities. AT&amp;T states in its recent FCC filings, that between 2016 and 2021, the number of mobile connected devices in the U.S. will increase from 481 million to 1 billion. That's mobile connected devices, but that's not wireless facilities, but it's, it's the devices used in those facilities. So in anticipation of that 1 billion number, just in the U.S., they're looking to increase their capacity to allow those devices to access the internet. And what are they talking about, what type of access to internet? And is the internet a thing and the coming revolution of being able to, uh, to control devices that's in your home using your mobile device? It's streaming of Netflix and Hulu and HBO that define that millennials are cutting the cord and not only on their actual telephone, but on cable television services and using mobile devices such as iPads or their iPhones to watch the latest even worse. It's individuals who are working from home, needing strong wireless, uh, facilities in order to use that, or are working from local coffee shops. It's individuals ordering their packages and tracking their packages on Amazon. Wearable devices such as, uh, Apple Watches or even more unfortunately, healthcare devices, and that could be something in the future such as heart monitors or, uh, simple assistive. Mobility, when it first started coming around in January, started talking about using small cells for autonomous driving cars. So, you know, to the extent that that is the wave of the future, so idea is that having this proliferation of cell devices throughout the country will, um, allow a portion of life on the driving car. The goal being that there's a need for better speed and capacity for this, uh, increase in mobile devices across the United States. So why small cells versus the macro cell? What's the difference between the two? So macro cells, um, can, are, are not going the way of the business. Those are still going to be proliferating throughout your cities. We will still be in a macro cell space. Again, the idea here is capacity. So it's not the coverage that a macro cell will provide, but it's the ability to augment that coverage through these small cells. So here's a Verizon diagram of how they see the small cell working, say, at downtown core, where there's a lot of people in centralized areas, say, outside of a popular lunch spot, who are trying to check their email or their Facebook or get in touch with a client. So small cells can also be used in places like a downtown core where the loadings are too high and there's interference for other macro facilities or cities are, or, or it's difficult to cite those large macro facilities in densely populated areas of these cities. AT&amp;T, for example, is expecting to deploy a thousand small cells and tenants across the Bay Area. What that will play is a 200,000 area, they haven't given us numbers, but just as an idea, a thousand small cell antennas in the Bay Area, and that is for one carrier alone. Neighboring cities across the Puget Sound area, in the meetings that I've been to so far, are talking about between 20 to 40 small cell nodes per residential area. So it is Verizon ring cells, some of those are called Polygon. Different, different, uh, organizations call them different names, but that, uh, Polygon is the residential area for the area in which they want to deploy and a node is the individual small cell that they will put attached to a utility pole or a pool. So, just to give you an idea of kind of the different scale of a small cell versus a macro cell. If you imagine if it's a tall man, uh, exactly, you see at the very left side, you see the small cell at the normal light pole side, so the ideal height of the small cell being at about, uh, 25 to 40 feet. And actually, you get much higher than that, say, on transmission, uh, utility poles, Verizon is probably what they have found difficulty. So they really like this weak spot of the 25 to 40 foot side. And then you have macro cells typically in the range of 8 feet to 120 feet. So, people keep asking me, what is a small cell? And it's one of those things that I know when I see it. The definition of a small cell varies by state, varies by carrier. In Washington State, we actually do have a defined small cell in RCW 836 375. And I'm going to take the next few slides and walk you through some pictures of small cells that have either been deployed in Washington State already or, uh, pictures that I've found in other jurisdictions, but I wanted to match these pictures to the RCW definition. One thing that I mentioned at the beginning is that you might be seeing some small cells. I will say that in Washington State, the amount of small cells that are actually in existence are quite small at this point in time. I've seen several applications and I would expect that we'll see deployment of small cells in multiple cities in the next several months. But if you really wanted to see what a small cell looks like right now, I would recommend driving, if can, to the Green Lake area, uh, in the Seattle area, and you can see some small cells attached to the Seattle three light pole. To my knowledge, right now, there are not small cells already deployed on Puget Sound energy poles, but they do know that they've been permitted and I believe there should be some coming in the next couple months. So to begin with, looking at the slide here, RCW 836 375 defines small cells to include antenna enclosures up to 3 cubic feet. So in each of these pictures, you'll see those antenna enclosures at about that size. Take a look at the middle picture, we'll see another picture later in the deck, uh, that's exactly the entire pole. But if you look at the top, and you look at the difference between the size of the bird and the canister at the top. One thing to think about when you think about your design standards is, do you wanna have shrouding like the picture in the middle has, or are you okay with exterior antennas and not having shrouding? There's no limit on the number of antennas supporting the RCW, but as I said, the antennas are, are such as 3 cubic feet. However, the shrouding is not included in the design limitation. So again, looking at that middle picture, you can see that it's, it's quite large when you start to shroud your canister. And sometimes, you'll see again later in the deck, that may be your city's preference, especially when you're thinking about seeing some of the wires in this area here or over here, the exterior wiring, especially on light standards, the exterior wiring can be quite tight. So the next part of the RCW definition is the primary equipment enclosure, and this is 17 cubic feet. So here again are two different, uh, light poles, one on the right is a Seattle three light pole. And you'll see that here in the middle is the radio for a Verizon deployment. Again, on the left-hand side of the screen, there is a cabinet with the radios in the primary equipment enclosure. The next slide shows you all of the items that are not included in the primary equipment enclosure. So these are items that you can sometimes find in the primary equipment enclosure, sometimes find in the pictures displayed off of the pole in a cabinet. This is the electric meter, if the power company requires that they are individually metered. This is a demarcation box, battery backup, would be outside of the primary equipment enclosure. What I can tell you right now is that Verizon, who's the one that's been coming around in most of the cities I've been working with, does not plan to use battery backups. And that is a question that you'd be asking when talking to the industry, do you plan on using battery backups? And so, what's the balance, is it, with that battery backup? And is it absolutely necessary to back up a small cell versus just using backup on your macro device? Power transfer switches are also not included in the primary equipment enclosure. If you look at that Green Lake picture, and I'll have another picture in a minute, you'll see that there's a small switch off to the side, that's a power transfer switch. Concealment's not included, ground base enclosures, grounding equipment, and cutoff switches. Cutoff switches, very important, especially to the extent that we have pole climbers or other individuals who plan on using the same poles, you need to be able to turn off the power, um, to the small cell when you need modifications to that stuff. So real quickly, what's missing from the small, from the RCW definition? It's the limit on the number of antennas. So, so it says that it's 3 cubic feet, it doesn't tell you how many antennas you can have. And what we've seen in other states is that there's a proliferation of the network of antennas. Verizon, they can give both of us a vein, more than one antenna, typically ranges from one to three antennas. Also, limit on the number of radio boxes. So, if you were to take a look at some pictures in California, you'll see that there are a number more of radio boxes than what I'm going to be showing in the diagram on, in the deck. So when you talk against the industry, how many radio boxes do you need? Is that going to be in one shroud or multiple shrouds? Small cell definitions are also missing the height limitation. Again, Verizon ideal height is between 25 and 40 feet. Mobility's ideal height was between 60 to 75 feet, and hearing that might be coming down, um, but again, you'll have to come to the specific carrier. Part of it, part of their ideal height has to do with that technology they're using as well as, uh, the line of sight. Additionally, and to me, one of the most important pieces is missing from the RCW definition, and quite honestly, from anybody you've talked to in the FCC, uh, or even industry, is the succession of the exterior conduits and the fiber connection and the power connection. Many individuals in the industry, including when they submitted their FCC filings, failed to mention those exterior, uh, pieces to their wireless deployment. And that's quite important because that has a significant visual impact. And those wireline facilities are all important because in order for these small cells to work, they need to have a fiber connection and a power connection. In order to have the fiber connection, a wireline utility needs to be franchised in your city, if there's any required franchise. So Verizon Wireless does not own wireline facilities. Sister companies like MCI Metro, who we may have heard of, or Verizon Business do own wireline facilities. In most of the cities I worked with, they have to have a separate franchise in order to, to those, uh, small cell facilities. So something to think about when meeting with the industry about small cells and reading about small cells is, don't find the argument that it's just a small visual impact and these are one radio box and two antennas. You also need to think about what does the exterior to the pole look like? So this news, next slide shows a, a nanometer of small cell, discusses exactly what I was just talking about, of the fiber and the power. So at the very top is the antenna. In the middle, you'll see two conduits, uh, exterior to the pole. One is a power conduit and one is a fiber and co-op conduit. These have to be about four and a half inches to five inches out, off of the pole itself and it's, that's because of the pole climbers. So believe it or not, even though if I'm in charge or if I'm accused today, the National Electric Safety Code is requiring that these, uh, conduits are off of the pole because of pole climbers. You also have the radio and, and the power disconnect that I just talked about. Noticeably also, you have the new fiber service. So even if fiber's already running to the pole, for example, if you've got Verizon FiOS or if you have Comcast CenturyLink, they may often need a new fiber service to support the small cell. So I'm gonna quickly run through a couple other pictures to show you what small cells look on, what it could be for. To the left is one right outside of West Park Zoo, is that picture of the, uh, canister at the top of the bird that I showed earlier, as well as a picture to the right on a PNC pole that is proposed in the city of Bellevue. Here are small cells on light poles. If you look to the left, this is a T-Mobile build out. And T-Mobile is unique because they have both their radios and their antennas, uh, attached to one. So they're much leaker designed, much smaller designed. Unfortunately, as of September, T-Mobile did not have planned deployment in most of the cities in Washington State. If you think they'll eventually get here, but they're not targeting cities, to my knowledge, right now. Um, but this is a proposal that they recently showed us of what small cell build out. I would say that I've seen these types of poles within Washington State without the T-Mobile attachment. But, so if you have a pole like this in your city, this is probably what a T-Mobile build out will look like. The other two poles are stand pole poles in other cities. There are also street furniture structures, but if you take a look at the left, this is a picture, I believe, in Palazzo. They can place their ground equipment either in the trash can, or... They can place their ground equipment either in the trash can, or in street furniture, like a equipment shelter or a bench. Recently, if you've driven along Florence and Madison in Seattle, you'll see similar equipment structures. I guess it's probably either for a cable company or electric company, as the one to the left here. Often happens when you meet with Verizon and other industry professionals, they like to show you this text in picture to the left, or the larger design in the middle, or to the right, this general pole for nowhere. These are three creative small cell lines. The small cells are enclosed within each of these structures. So as you can see, all the wires are either underground in the structure themselves. The light standard stuff will act as a light, and the equipment is in the base here. I probably don't recommend having tacks in Washington State, maybe used in Washington, but I haven't seen very many. One thing to also think about are strand mounted facilities. So what you see here are actually not small cells, but they're pictures of what small cells could look like. And these are here in my headquarters, in the sewer corridor area. These are actually centrally boxes or foam pieces in the middle of the wires. But it gives you an idea of where small cells are going. Comcast and T-Mobile are both encouraging the idea of allowing strand mounted facilities. And the recent legislation that was proposed in Washington State, there was a carve-out that was created that if they wanted to, they could move from a small cell mounted facility on a utility pole to a strand mounted facility without getting the, without getting a permit. So keep in mind, as you start to develop your codes and talk to industry, ask them about strand mounted facilities. So let's talk about, we'll see what is not a small cell. This mobility proposed one hundred and twenty foot pole is not a small cell. This is a matric power. Now, I've been told by mobility that they are no longer proposing these poles in the majority of the country, and they are redesigning their systems. So our hope is that we don't see these hundred and twenty foot poles. But about a year ago, they were really pushing for this type of development within the city, and specifically in residential areas and in retail. So I want to briefly switch over to some active legislations that occurred over the last year, both within the FCC, throughout the nation and other states, and in Washington State as well. So the first is in the FCC. The FCC has been very active when it comes to looking at small cell deployment, and deployment in general of both wireless and wireline infrastructure. This started in November, when mobility filed a petition for a statutory ruling. And from there, the FCC expanded the mobility petition to include questions on small cell fighting and macro fighting generally. For those of you who may have read the FCC notice and its expansion, it absolutely questioned whether or not cities were acting as barriers to entry to wireless industry. It signals that the wire says the FCC was interested in fast, smooth deployment of the wireless industry, and did not want cities to act as a barrier, and were worried that things like a hundred and fifty days, which is the current shot clock, was too long of a time to allow for wireless sites. So in addition to the mobility petition and the FCC notice that came out in December, and that wrapped up in April, the FCC issued two notices of proposed rulemaking that are currently in process right now. So first is the wireless infrastructure notice of proposed rulemaking that stopped comment on rules and processes that affect the speed and cost of infrastructure deployment, shot clock for local review, the addition of a deemed dislanted language on wireless facilities, not just on the expansion of wireless facilities, the use and impact of moratoria, and then build outs and short preservation, as well as the effective impact. The wireline infrastructure NPR and stop comment on the flexibility to be in cost to implementing network changes for wireline franchises, and the streamlining of the regulatory approval to discontinue legacy services. That one also talks about pole attachments, and how much wireline facilities are paying to utility companies such as PNC or Public Utilities Security. In addition, there has been significant small cell legislation passed throughout the nation. This map shows states in which small cell legislation was either passed in twenty seventeen or twenty sixteen, and there's small cell legislation currently pending in Wisconsin and California. If you're interested in some interesting articles about small cell legislation going on in California, I recommend reading editorials in the LA Times. The small cell legislation in these states were driven by a national movement. It's the same as national lobbyists by the industry that we found in Washington State, and there are significant parallels to the original Washington State bill and the new legislation passed in these other states. So just Victoria talked a little bit about what happened in Washington State. I wrote here, cities defeated the Washington bill, some would say, well, we ran out of the clock. But either way, from a national perspective, Washington State was congratulated by the TOA for doing a good job, as was the AWC, and specifically Brianna Murray and Victoria Lincoln, at working with the legislature, and lobbying, and city voicing the city complaints against the draft bill originally issued by Senator Erickson. And that's a significantly favored approach in the Asian industry, and it allows small cell deployment of both city-owned poles and structures. There was some pretty broad language about the allowance of wireless facilities on any city-owned structures that we were able to remove from the proposed bill. There was also the Senator Collins, Senator Sheldon amendments, that Brianna and Victoria and others looked very hard at starting to round its thought of compromise between the cities and the telecoms. And it was, the goal on that one was that required cities to pass small cell ordinance. So as Victoria mentioned, sitting on our hands and doing nothing is not a great strategy for this upcoming legislative session. I would expect that the map I originally showed at the beginning will be more read in the twenty eighteen legislative session, and just see the telecom industry dropping this issue in Washington State. So issues that the industry really targeted were access to the right of way, land use requirement, instead of fighting undergrounding areas, and cost for rental facilities on poles. Specifically, they would want to see a cap on the level of city-owned poles and structures against a complaint, because other cities like outside of the state of Washington, and in Cisco and Portland, in the industry's perspective, were charging too much for those poles. So something to think about when you're looking at designing your code, you're looking at designing, what your master lease agreement might be, if you're willing to rent city-owned poles, is what do you want to charge for the city-owned poles? What do you consider to be their market value? I would say that this will be one of the biggest issues that will come in the twenty eighteen legislative session. So with that, I'm going to take a couple questions, and then turn the microphone over to my colleague, Scott Miller.
Marty Andrews has asked, Verizon currently argues with two cubic feet for a standard of our code, state law supports interpretation, why?
I would agree with Verizon there. State law currently does support that interpretation. And they do need more than one antenna. What I have been successful with with Verizon is talking to them about the size of their antennas, and over the course of the last several months, that's even decreased, as well as the size of their radius. So think about the shrouding, think about the number of antennas that they want, and discuss with them how they can shroud that, or make it small or painted, in the same color as the pole.
And as we're about to discuss, the city retains contractual and regulatory authority until the next, until the next legislative session. The Jeff Loers asked, if you have franchise fees or linear foot charges, would the council members ask whether the public goods can be negotiated as part of the deal to provide your evidence that public goods can be included in franchise, such as free network connection or other?
So I have, so let's take a step back and talk about that question for a second. So what Scott was talking about is RCW thirty-five twenty-one eight sixty doesn't allow for franchise fees on these types of facilities. So then the question is, can we look at public goods and additionally try to get the wireless industry to provide some additional purposes? I have seen it before. I think that we're going to see a decrease, not an increase, in that, because the industry is well aware of the RCW. But that being said, I have seen some cities that have successfully negotiated a free fee for the city.
Probably the more important application, I think we both can guess, is making sure that you get good design, fit in with your street game. And that public goods can be forward by the sort of trash enclosure, a cabinet, that is, make sure that the facilities, particularly replacement poles, poles fitting with your street structure.
And also, to go on top of that, would be to make sure that, well, just to note that as they put in new light standards, you are getting to light in a city, and optimize Verizon's role in the ownership of those poles and provide that lighting to the city. With that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Scott.
Good morning. So we're about to talk about what is looking at, and which will emphasize the importance of the preemption discussion and the great work done by the AWC and Brianna in the last session. And... Thank you. Sorry. As you've probably figured out, those of you who've worked with us, Alana is the technical expert here. Traditionally, cities have been the stewards of the public right of way. Washington case law emphasizes that cities, as trustees, hold the public right of way for primary uses for streets and travel. There are wide variety of secondary uses, by utilities, and private and public, that cities may authorize. The grant or denial of franchise to use the public right of way is a legislative act. And courts have traditionally, in our state, given city councils action due deferment, and apply a very limited standard of review. Statutorily, Washington cities, particularly code cities, have strong authority. You have, as you know, all power is necessary under the state constitution. They're not specifically denying law. As we'll discuss, those fall into a couple of categories, legislative, contracting, as well as the police power exercise. Those powers are specifically, can be exercised regarding the ownership improvement, maintenance protection, I won't read the list, and beautification of the public way. So it's not just ensuring the traffic moves smoothly, but the total regulation of the right of way is bound to be the balance. Cities can regulate right of way by contractual authority, which is a franchise, and by police power regulation. That police power regulation, often it's a zoning power that you're most familiar with, but it's also the adoption of your construction codes and regulations that are important to exercise. I note in materials, if you're curious about police power exercise, I really encourage you to take a look at an article by Hugh Spencer, "The Smartest Lawyer Never Not to Be Elected in the State of Springfield." Franchises and Master Permit. Cities use different nomenclature, franchise, right of way use agreement, master permit. Putting it in the context of two majors statutes which govern the exercise of your authority. We'll first look at RCW thirty-five twenty-one eight sixty. This prohibits the charging of franchise fees except for cable TV. And this gets back to just question, if you've got some leverage going in, you can get your costs covered, you can exercise authority over, to a certain extent currently, over where things go, and using SEPA as leverage, as we'll discuss, gives you self-negotiating authority in the franchise process. But it's clear that sites, others in certain site-specific charges, your authorities are limited. Thirty-five ninety-nine is a broad statute which balances rights and obligations of cities and the telecommunications industry. It's familiar to many of you in terms of the relocation requirements to facilities, and if you've been using it for years. Now, again, another shout out to Victoria. I think it's important to remember that thirty-five twenty-one eight sixty's provisions and thirty-five ninety-nine, we're not talking about the code of Hammurabi. These are laws that were extensively negotiated with input from all the places, cities, counties, and the industry, only five to ten years ago. These are modern statutes. And when the industry talks about rolling out the 5G network and cities getting out of the way, it's important to note that they haven't finished rolling out the 4G network, and that the provisions that we're discussing were specifically negotiated in lobbying with that build out in line. And you'll note the limitations that's contained in thirty-five ninety-nine. Cities have no obligation to participate in construction or modification to accommodate the facility, and you don't have liability for costs, and you can, and should, require complete indemnification in the activity of any industry operating in your way. Shot clock. This is, we're not going to go into a lot of detail, other than to point out that one of the essential parts of your response to the small cell rollout and deployment are the adoption of the shot clocks established both by the state and by the federal government. The state statute takes the hundred and fifty days provided by the FCC, and breaks it out into one hundred and twenty days to grant a franchise, and thirty days to issue a right of way permit. A right of way use permit is the same permit that you're very familiar with, that authorizes everyone from contractors to utilities to enter the right of way and hook up a customer. The right of way permit is the authorization to utilize a specific location to come into the right of way, set up lighters. That's something that every city's familiar with. The wireless communication facilities, co-location, that is, reusing existing facilities, has a ninety day shot clock. Six four oh nine A, an eligible facilities request, are a, has a sixty day shot clock, and the review on eligible facilities is a thirty day. Six four oh nine A is the, is taking an existing facility and expanding it in a way that the FCC has found to be nonsubstantial. As you'll note from the slide here... As you'll note from the slide here, what the FCC considers to be non-substantial may not be indefinitely in the eye of the beholder. And Alana hinted at earlier, one, important policy discussion for your council: concealment technology adds an additional impediment to the visual environment. It's important though, because, or can be an important tool, because 6409A expansion can be used to defeat a concealment strategy. SEPA can be a tool as well. While small cell facilities are generally exempt from SEPA review if they fit the definition that we've discussed, that exemption applies in commercial, industrial, manufacturing, forest, or agricultural films. That is, not in residential areas. And it is always true with SEPA, you can look at the entire series of actions to determine whether a project is categorically exempt. So when you're looking at that zone or polygon that's being rolled out, consider whether each and every facility in the rollout is exempt. The federal law prohibits cities from discriminating between providers of functional equivalent services and actions which have the effect of prohibiting, or actually prohibiting the provision of personal wireless service to your citizens. In the Ninth Circuit, we have fairly well-developed tests to whether a significant gap in coverage would exist and whether the utility, the wireless communication provider, is utilizing the least intrusive means to accomplish its purpose. What I emphasize is that it's important to begin your efforts at regulation promptly. Because if you are sloppy coming out of the gate and provide one wireless communication provider a methodology or location, you're going to need to treat everyone who follows you the same way so that you don't discriminate against, between the providers. A lot is put together as a myth and fact test that I really like. Tests, though, there's myth, myth or fact. Tests don't apply infrastructure companies like the state. Answer myth. The Ninth Circuit has applied the test to an infrastructure company, American Tower versus San Diego. As Alana mentioned, large corporations like Verizon, Crown Capital, and others divide between the actual service providers. They'll have a separate company that may own the infrastructure. Mobility is, in fact, the infrastructure company for Sprint. That's a corporate decision, but the rules and regulations that you apply will apply to both. Myth or fact, tests don't apply to small cell deployments because small cells solve capacity, not coverage issues. We suggest myth. Small cells serve both capacity and coverage issues. And myth, the Ninth Circuit has not overturned this case law for small cells. We suggest this is one thing your city attorney needs to closely follow, the law is likely to change. And given the new Supreme Court makeup, we may see this appear before the new court within the next four to five years. Next myth. One thing that I think we'll comment on this, that's very important at this stage, is to develop a resource list and coordinate what you do with the utilities in the industry. When we first got involved with this, I'd always heard public works directors refer to the communication tape on a utility pole. What we've now found out is that due to federal state electrical code provision, communications companies can't use the communication tape. So that's why you're seeing the antennas at pole top and not underneath the electrical wire. As you develop design standards in your community, using the resource sources and the technical expertise of PSD, so we have a PUD, and other public utilities will be an important resource, critical to your effort. As you develop that resource list, sit down. We sat down recently in Model Lake Terrace with five of the companies that provide infrastructure, including Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile, to help the city, which is in the process of developing its downtown area with a street scape design, infrastructure, light poles, trying to develop a look for their community. Many communities have done. By involving the industry early, you can be sure that the designs we choose are easily, more easily convertible from a light pole to a light pole and small cell facility. That can be as, changes as minor in your design as picking a pole from a catalog that looks the same but has a slightly larger interior cavity and the appropriate portals to install the antenna. Another tip for the public works department is to take a look at your construction standards and make sure that the bases which you require to be built for light poles and light standards are of a science and depth and have the proper bolting that a new replacement pole that includes a wireless facility can be simply at, avoiding disruptions of your street and sidewalks down the road. Maybe a slightly higher cost going in if you avoid breaking that new street, which public works directors need. Educating your policy makers. We hope that you use the source of materials we're providing to educate your planning department and your city council on what this new technology is and where it will go. Integrating your comprehensive plan, street scape visioning upfront, and using those receptacles that are both a waste container and an equipment cabinet can get the sort of things that your city needs. If someone's providing free trash receptacles in your downtown area in a way that coordinates with your vision for that downtown area. It's critical that you streamline your review process. Again, we need success stories for the next state legislature about how cities have proactively adopted regulations and have smoothed the permitting process. Identify both opportunities in your town plan for good design and also designate the sensitive environments. And those can be everything from shoreline to underground district. I think we'd agree that citizens that have paid to underground their neighborhood would not like the idea that now a new provider is coming in and putting poles in an area that they just paid on their ground. And again, thoughtful design should be the goal of everyone. Right now, while you still have leverage through the franchising process, is the perfect time to be talking with industry, with the industry about the type of design you want. One of the challenges for, particularly for mid-sized and smaller cities, is that these topics, small cell deployment, really bridge to traditional areas. Public works departments or engineering departments typically run the charge when it comes to franchise. On the other hand, planning departments have typically handled macro tower, lattice tower installation. Combining those expertises is going to be essential. But what's, I think, more important, as Tim Donaldson of the City Attorney Hall while is thoughtfully pointed out, is to be sure that you have one small cell park. Core things. Again, given the importance of the shot clock and the need to have a smooth integrated process, you need one central location handling the permitting process. If we have a list here of topics for your city attorney, lucky him or her, there's a lot here on the plate. Getting the most important, we suggested, make sure you've got a good franchise application and a fee deposit program to make sure that the industry covers the charge, the cost of what they are bringing to your city. So what?
So with that, I want to do a quick shout-out to the NTOA conference. It's coming to Seattle this year. This is the conference for the National Public Utilities Officer. If there's ever a year to go to the NTOA conference, this is the year. Small cell planning is a huge topic at the NTOA conference along with general water line fighting and the cable industry in general. This is a conference of city side officials, though you will also see wireless and wireline and cable industry officials there. But it is really targeted at elected officials, city staff, and city attorneys. And I know I'm very excited about it. You don't need Chicago to New York or New Orleans or Chicago, you can just come to Seattle. In addition, we want to have a state chapter, WTOA. I highly recommend joining that chapter. They have a wonderful list for, and they take their participants and members in sharing questions and franchises, et cetera, with each other. So I want to give a quick shout-out to WTOA as well. And before we take questions, we're going to show one more slide. This slide is a helpful website. If you want to learn more about small cells, Omar Maffrey, who's a city attorney in San Francisco, has a four-part series online. It's the perspective of the city of San Francisco. It's got great pictures and some big issues for you to think about, highly developed, your code. There's also the nail conference that was involved here in January, and the next one there as well, and the NTOA site as well. So with that, I think we're ready to open it up for questions, Victoria. If you have some more, I have one question already here. Josh, this comes from Deborah Dawson. It asks, is case law dating to the 1940s that's really relevant today and that doesn't anticipate that clause again?
The case law is solid, and although, given the seminal site, these principles have been uniformly qualified in Washington, D.C. in a variety of contexts. The principles have been reaffirmed as recently as litigation involving the stadium building in Seattle. So that still goes on, it's all along, but it's good.
And I've also mentioned that something to think about with regard to case law is, I mean, think about how city-owned poles and a rental for city-owned poles, a stadium lawn, that starts mentioning. Right, we are going back to the Constitution, the United States Constitution, old case law as well as regards to how much a city should charge their market value, what's considered their market value, and what cities should be thinking about the knock-up status of public law.
Okay, here's the best gauge of how strong the law is in your favor. It's that the wireless communication facility providers, rather than tested in court, are going to the state legislature to preempt it. Again, this is strong statutory constitutional authority, and I recommend Hugh Spencer's article to you if you want to follow up how that has evolved over the years.
So, our next question, I would like to comment all of it. And he asks, says, well, my brother will live the life of jurisdiction. He wants to know, will any laws or guidelines on topics that could be addressed within the code franchise and permit side? So, I think I need to start with that question. This is probably a little bit of a broad question.
Sure. Well, let me, as those of you who have worked with us know, I have a very strong opinion that cities should, wherever possible, utilize the franchising lease power authority through contract and construction standards rather than through zoning law. Couple reasons for it. Number one is the limitations of the federal shot clock in light of GMA and Land Use Petition Act review. While there's a carve-out under LUPA for a right-of-way permit, the whole GMA process adds a lot of time and makes cities less impolite.
I couldn't agree more. And if we revert to permit levels, one thing I've heard a lot from industry is it's just too small. That's the common complaint that the industry is getting. It's whether you're seeing on a national level and at a local level. They complain about more in Korea, and they complain with nine street cities to consider both franchise and wireless fighting. And so my recommendation is to see how we can lean on your franchises and their permits. Using a franchise template, making sure that you acquire franchise applications with a fee deposit. I think that's really important, to get a fee deposit with franchise applications. And the reason is, I've seen too many industries and consultants come in, talk about franchises with city time, and including city traffic time, and then go out of the deal before they actually have to pay the administrative fees. So I do recommend a franchise application with a fee deposit so that you can reduce your administrative fees. But in addition, creating a process of allowing you to issue permits in a streamlined fashion. Getting it within 30 days of a right-of-way use permit like RTW is one, or 15 to 90 days if you're doing back permit to wireless lines. That, to me, is being pushed from the industry. Then one of the areas that makes cities have a barrier is the amount of time it takes to issue those permits.
One of the fastest ways to reduce that time is the tip that we gave as we went through the slides involving the utility company, the PUD, the owner of the pole in design discussion, and the industry. What's most, what will streamline your process the most is moving away from that open-ended design review process that cities may use to in-design each individual building through architectural design review. And towards standardized solutions to specific problems, have a standardized approval in place of design for utility pole attachment, a standard replacement pole that most of the industry can utilize. If those designs are packaged and ready to go, it's very important that whoever's at the counter reviewing that right-of-way use permit is a box checker and not an architectural design reviewer.
Well, Kirk, with that, Scott, I don't see any more questions. It's been a pleasure working with AWC and Victoria on presenting this webinar. At the end of the slide there, you'll find contact information for both Scott and I. We would be happy to work with your city and answer questions or help you develop code franchises and permitting processes. So thanks again to AWC and Victoria for allowing us to do this with our rhythm. And if you have any additional questions, please contact Victoria at awc.
Any thoughts?
Questions that I can't answer before?
I take it that our poles that were just put in and replaced are good, standardized?
Well, our decorative light fixtures are probably not as tall as what they would, the industry would desire for the height they're looking for. I think our Cobra light... the industry would desire for the height they're looking for. I think our Cobra lights at the intersections are probably, the bases would support additional equipment on those sort of, that sort of infrastructure. We do have fiber, I don't know if there's fiber actually in the ground, but there's conduit for it on College Avenue. So that is, the industry will likely try to take advantage of that. We have fiber in other areas. We have it on 12th Street. And I think we have some on West Whitman, towards Myler, East Whitman, excuse me. So I do like the idea of, towards the end there where they were talking about utilizing the franchises and construction standards as opposed to having a bunch of heavily, you know, designing standards that we have to work through. You know, it's a lot to work through when you have 30 days to do a permit issue. So this is something, like I said, our city attorney will be consulting with them. We may join a consortium. We'll just see how it progresses. And if there's changes to our ordinance itself, we'll bring that back to you. So stay tuned to us. Any other thoughts?
So let me disclose that I work for a telecommunications company. And so there's many things that the city needs to consider. Obviously, there's this sort of balance about how do you protect, you know, the beauty of the city, or a lot of things like that. But then also the services provided for the citizens that citizens may want, right? So for instance, if the city had some ordinances that were so strong in the past that did not allow cell towers, then we wouldn't have cell service in College Place, you know? So at some point, the citizens would become very upset because, you know, when you start, you don't know what you're missing out. At some point, right, then it becomes the standard, right? Like everybody now, we have a cellphone. 20 years ago, almost nobody had one. So, and what's happening with the 5G network, which is really most of what the small cell is all about. There's other facilities for other technologies out there on power poles already, but this small cell is for the quote-unquote 5G. So right now, we have the best network is 4G, and a lot of places we don't have 4G. And the, you know, the big cell towers provide that coverage for cell phones. The 5G is different technology, different bandwidths, you know, radio waves, and so, and they go shorter distances. So, you know, they might only go 5,000 feet. So that means that they might need to have several poles around the neighborhood if you only conserve 5,000 feet from your antenna. While the ones that are on cell towers that they've been using for 4G can go, you know, miles. So those are some of the differences. But part of why they're needing this, or 5G, is because of the need for extra bandwidth. You know, like what they said, more and more people are now even watching movies on their cellphone. So, you know, that means they do need a bigger communications highway to your customers. Depending on the technology, it's all over the board. You know, I've gone to trade shows. You have antennas that are little. I mean, I have antennas that are big. So different companies, depending on their solution and depending on who they're working with. Like Verizon said that they need three antennas, and that means because the antennas are only serving a certain angle, so they end up putting, let's say, three around a pole to go like 360. There are companies that have antennas that are 360. So just one would provide that. So again, but the other issue though is, not only is this that everybody needs their infrastructure. So we're going to have Verizon, and Sprint, and whatever other companies, all fighting in a sense for that space. So in a block, Verizon might only need to be in one pole, but then AT&amp;T wants to be in the next pole, and Sprint wants to be in the next pole. And so at some point, you may want, you know, you might see that every pole has antennas or some of this. So, you know, it's just kind of wait and see to some degree what happens. You know, I think in a smaller community, maybe there's going to be less competition. I'm not sure. You know, some of these companies might decide, well, we're not going to provide that level of service. They're going to be in the big cities duking it out, and they'll come here eventually. But, you know, we don't know. The other thing is that there's national codes for poles and so forth, and they mention the communication space. The poles, depending in this city, they're not owned by the, by the city. In some places, there's public utility districts, so the city could own the poles. So obviously, they have more to say if you own the pole. Here, if it's, you know, Columbia REA or PPNL, well, they have rules on how you use the poles. It's their poles. So somebody, like the company I work for, Pocket Internet Communications, we have to go and apply a permit from them to attach to their pole. And there's all kinds of rules based on national codes plus their own regulations of where you can or can't put facilities. So like, for instance, they won't, PPNL will not allow you to put an antenna on top of the pole, which they showed some there. You have to be in the quote-unquote communication space, which is below, certain number of feet below their power lines. So it becomes to where some of those locations, depending on your equipment for 5G, might not be a good place for deployment because it's not as high as they want. So the other issue is that some of these companies may want to start putting their own poles so they can attach stuff to the top. So, okay, PPNL's on this side of the street, Verizon might come and start picking, put a pole on the other side of the street, and, you know, throughout town, so we can put our facility. Because we need to have, be on top, and we might need a 30-foot pole. So those are some of the things that I think the city needs to be prepared to address. And I think that a smart thing that they said is, the city needs to get PPNL and Columbia REA and get their input. Don't try and go it along because obviously, they have a lot of expertise. They own the poles. They know what the regulations might be. And even some of the companies, Sprint, what is it that you may need, and how could it work? And anyway, sorry for taking so much time.
So fiber doesn't take care of this?
No, fiber doesn't take care of it because, so fiber is the huge pipeline, but they're talking about, you know, internet service. So that's over the airwaves, you know, kind of like Wi-Fi kind of stuff. And so fiber, what fiber will do is that it goes to the pole and connects to that antenna. But you need that antenna to send out the radio waves that your phone is going to connect to. And some of this internet of things that they said is that there's so many things now and coming that are going to be connected that you can control with your phone, and a lot of it is cars. Not only that they're going to drive themselves, but even that, that they can just automatically get the best traffic route for you to avoid traffic jams and, you know, just automatically it can feed to your little computer on your dash, you know, this connectivity. So you have your phone, the car's got its own computer, and more and more things are happening. You know, the kid in the backseat's got that little pad. Everybody is requiring this connection. And so that's why they need more and more bandwidth. They're already seeing that they're kind of maxing out. And so this is like the new technology to fill in. So.
Interesting. Anything else, Commissioner? Anything else, Mr. Richard?
I don't have anything else on that topic.
Well, let's move to the other agenda item, which is the workshop for sign coders.
Great. The last time we met, we see, sorry, should we open this up for public discussion? Yes. Sorry. At this time, if there is any public discussion on our small cell webinar, please feel free to comment and state your name and address if you wish to.
The only thing, I'm Dan Ward, and I'm the B line. My understanding is, is a lot of the cell, the towers are designed for cell.
If you want to speak, please come up. I'll speak in a microphone so we can have you on record. Thank you.
In a lot of the more metropolitan areas, the cell towers are designed and built by the cell companies. They have agreements between each other. So you don't have to have a cell tower for the rise and a lot for AT&amp;T. It's not unusual for cell towers to have transponders or whatever you call them from, from multiple companies. It's just a little bit.
Thank you. All right. Anything else from public? All right. Sorry, Dan. Thank you. Let's, use the sign code, please.
Okay. So this is our fourth workshop on the sign code. The last time we met on the July 18th, I had an email that I printed off from Dan Ward, and it had on my table here to get to you guys for the record. And I know both of you did that at the last meeting. So you do have a copy of that now, and I would like to look through that. The, we made several, there are several recommendations for changes last meeting, and I went through those. I guess if we start at the beginning, we'll just kind of touch base on all of them. The definition section, we, to make it easier for amendments in the future, we eliminated the lettering. So it's just alphabetical. And then we added some language to the projected sign section. Minor addition there just regarding that projected signs might also suspend from projecting elements of the building, like keys or onions. The temporary sign section, we decided, you guys decided that it was better to have, we had, for one thing, we shouldn't have legislation in definitions. So we called out the sections that talk about how long a temporary sign can be up. And then we also moved those later in the code. Let's see, we moved all of that to a temporary sign section in the code. That pretty much covers the definition sections. We also, under temporary events, we decided there's some inconsistencies in the code. We had one section referred to removal of temporary signs. We put it at one hour and another had two hours. So we, the commission decided that it was, the consensus was best to have it at one hour. Other wall signs, there was some concern from, I think it was an email about from a council member regarding not allowing projections into the public right-of-way, and also in looking at some of our existing buildings that are built right on the property line, and they have several storefronts. It makes sense for them to be able to continue to have, they're minor signs. They're usually either hanging from a sofa or, you know, there's four or five bolts that are attaching it to the wall of the building. They're not big. Often, they're not even lit. So they can be removed rather easily if we need to get in there and do work. So the consensus was that we allow encroachment into the right-of-way. And there isn't, so we added an encroachment section later. And that encroachment section is specific to projecting signs. So we won't allow encroachment for pole signs. We won't allow encroachment for foundations, footings, you know, for structural elements. It would only be for projecting signs as defined in this code. And then under the pole sign section, under the walls, I just kind of go back up to the wall sign section. In that section, we, for projecting signs, we calculate the surface area or the square footage of the sign based on one sign of that projected sign. It has two sides. So I believe the consensus was, under the pole signs, that we would do the same. In the general commercial zone, we had 200 square foot, but we didn't, we didn't define how we determine that square footage. So it's from one side. And I think mine might have some input on that. I've got an email from him, so we can, maybe we'll go back to that after I get done going through everything. And then I think we also, we changed, we kept the square footage for, there was some discussion about increasing the size of the sign in the downtown mixed use, up from the proposed 60 square feet to maybe 90 or 100. And the consensus was that we should keep it at the 60 square feet. So that was that. Didn't have any changes to the sidewalk signs. And then this is that encroachment section that I said we added. So allow encroachment into the right-of-way. They can't extend within five feet. The sign can't extend within five feet at the back of the curb line. So you can't come all the way out to the street edge of your sign. You have to still have a setback. And then we added a notice that they would have to be removed if the city needed to get in there. And they would have 14 days upon notice to move that down. So we would condition the permit in that, so they would understand that in the event we need to get in there, they may have to remove it so that we can get in and do work. Let's see. Political signs, we had to increase the 48 hours to 10 days. The removal of political signs has to be a reasonable amount of time. And 48 hours for political signs to have a campaign go out and collect all of their signs is not reasonable. So they found 10 days is considered a reasonable amount of time. And then we also added a, I believe, Mr. Dickerson, Councilman Dickerson, mentioned something about inclusion of the historical and iconic signs. So we added some language about that. If there is a sign that may not be, that says existing, but it doesn't comply with the new regulations, they could apply to the Historic Preservation Commission to get an exemption, to get declared as a historic or iconic sign. And then just a language correction there. This is another section that had, talked about temporary signs and how they could be in place. We had that in several different sections. So we pulled that out and just created our, its own temporary sign section. And that concludes the changes that we have thus far. So questions, comments?
Just one comment. We changed the temporary sign from two hours to one hour. I always thought about that, particularly with yard sales and such things. Trying to clean up in the yard show, get the sign out. We're there an hour or six. up in the yard sale and get the sign out, we're there an hour or six in the night, high in the sky. How many bedrooms does it take to happen?
Well, I feel that if, by the time they get their stuff cleaned up at home from their yard sale, they will have forgotten to go or too tired to go pick up that sign. They need to go pick that sign up first before, I mean, when you're done with the yard sale, you're done and you need to close it.
You may feel that, but you would need to work that way.
Too many of them get left.
I don't know if you're gonna have, please have that an hour after the yard sale done. Again, they will be done in a little while.
We're finding more and more that the yard sale signs just have arrows pointing in directions rather than putting their address on there, so.
I did correspond with John about the total area of the pole signs and I couldn't be mistaken. My recollection was that we had attempted agreement that we would limit the total area of a sign regardless of the number of sides that it had, because it could be spherical or two-sided or octagonal. Made more sense to me to limit that square footage regardless of the number of sides, sides of a sign. And I would appreciate hearing from each of you as well.
And keep in mind, this is in the general commercial zone, so places like down in the Walmart area, that 200 or total 400 basically would be the blocks, right?
This is applying to pole sign or ground sign?
Pole signs.
Well, and I think if I look at the definition of the pole signs, they, so you have, you take Meadowbrook Plaza, there's that, it's rather wide, I think it's monolithic, but it goes up several feet and it has, I think it's two columns of panels. Now, if that were, if we were, if there was an application for a product like that right now and we would be applying this code, I wouldn't be looking at the structure around it, I would be looking at where the, the area where the signage is. And the way that sign is, you know, it's for a lot of businesses, they're, the panels are about, I think they're about two feet tall by like four feet long, maybe five feet long. I didn't get out and measure it, but just looking at it. So I could see where, if you limited it to 200 feet, it could be hard to advertise for a strip mall. The Walmart sign we have out there, it's, I don't think it's 100 square feet on one side, the pole sign. So I don't know if we could end up with a situation where somebody did have a really big pole sign and it was 50 feet high in the air and, I mean, maybe. I can't think of many areas where I've seen that in other jurisdictions.
Will you inform us on the ability of a complex like that to have multiple signs or are they limited to a single pole or monolith sign?
Well, they could do, they could do multiple structures. There are often a lot of parcels involved in strip malls because of the different ownership types that they have or the phasing that they go through. So they'll do a master plan and have different lots and you would treat, you know, you've got two structures down there right now on Meadowbrook. So I think, in the conversations I've had with that, that property owner, the developer, the property owner that, the current ownership right now was a, was a side partner in the construction of that. Vandervert was the managing partner in there out of Spokane area and they've done several leads. And I think the current owners, their view is that they were short-sighted in the placement of their signage. They built those first two strip malls and then they had those front lots and then the recession hit and then they just, it was like a fire sale and they started selling off the lots instead of retaining them and leasing them. And in that process, they didn't preserve any locations or easements for signage out along the highway for the strip mall section. So, so I think if they'd done better planning, that they probably would have had maybe smaller signage for in front of each building that, you know, displayed the, right, the tenants in each one of those strip malls and some signage out on the island. So it's not to say that they wouldn't be able to advertise their businesses and do signage, but they may not be able to do such a big one if we limited it to one, basically 100 square feet per side is what you would be proposing, I think.
Well, I know the conversation we had, we even talked about, you know, whether the Union 76 has the globe and how you calculate that. And that's where we started talking about multi-dimensional signs. So for instance, the Meadowbrook sign, if, instead of just being two sides flat, if it was square and then they had signage on each side, then keep on adding. So we wanted to somehow regulate that it was a total amount, so if they chose to do more like a box or a rectangle than with four sides, there would have to be smaller sides.
Yeah.
So I know that we had that discussion and I think we ended up thinking that we should just say, you know, all sides. Now, if that means that, I don't know, we might need to define that a little better because I see what we're really kind of thinking is that it's a sign that's flat, but it's got two sides, probably the same message. And then maybe if we use this application and allow the 200, it would be really like 200 on each side.
Yeah, and you could end up with 800 square feet if you did this box.
Right, yeah.
So, you guys tell me, if you want, if you guys want to go down to 100 feet per side, I mean, then you could do a box and still get, I don't know.
Well, I don't know. I guess for me is, and part of this is trying to imagine what's the signs out there to see what big. I don't know if 200, I can't visualize right now what a sign that's 200 on one side is. So, you know, is it the Meadowbrook Mall, is that about that size?
I would, I would gather that is close to 200 square feet. It might be a little less than that.
And that's per side?
Per side.
So we might have to define, because I'm thinking for something that's big like that, that's probably adequate. Or we might have to say, okay, 200 per side on a flat sign or, you know, but if we end up multi-dimensional, then it's 400 total or something.
But it's up to you guys. You could, you could make the determination that it would be more appropriate to have smaller signs and maybe more of them in the case of the strip mall. You know, they would have two if we were building that today.
So the other issue that I had is that some of these big signs, depending on the development, you know, it's not necessarily, to my view and thinking, one size fits all because, you know, so we have a parcel that is 500 foot wide and it's got this big sign, but if that parcel gets cut into, into 10, you know, so now we have 50 feet and is each one allowed the same size sign, now all of a sudden, you know, every 50 feet, we have one of these giant signs, you know, then that's, that would look, you know, cluttered.
There is a provision in, in the code that would restrict you from erecting a sign, block another sign.
So, yeah, I'm not, you know, obviously the expert, so if this is covered somewhere else, I guess I just want to make sure that we don't end up with that scenario.
Maximizing, minimizing is, you lose some of the creativity capabilities. Regulating more the person, the object.
Seems like we could get more and more detail into this and there's always be more, more questions in details. Is there an opportunity for an owner to apply for an exception and present a case for why their sign meets the principle, but if not the details?
The variance process for our zoning code in general is, there's a 10% administrative variance that can apply to dimensional requirements, so area square footage requirements, setback requirements, those sort of things. I can administer those. The other option is a variance process through our hearings examiner, but those processes, there's several, you know, criteria that you have to meet in order to succeed at getting a variance. And the process is lengthy and there's hearings involved and there's considerable expense for the hearing examiner, several thousand dollars and no guarantee for outcome. So generally, no, the variance process is not, it's just not recommended.
Is that something that we could write into this document itself?
Well, there, there's a reference in here to our variance process. I would not recommend having a separate variance tract for a specific part of a code. That's generally not how you write ordinances. You try to have one, you know, PO process, variance processes that are all codified in one section, they're entitled 19. That way, it's a cleaner way to handle those sort of things and you don't get it. You don't end up in a position where you end up in a lawsuit.
Now, the Meadowbrook sign, is that 200 feet on each side?
I don't, I haven't measured it exactly. I would gather that it's around that size, you know.
Hardly seems too big to me. Anything I'd want to hear on a larger scale, allow developers a little more flexibility to limit that.
And the other option on the pole sign, so it gives, say Walmart, you know, they, for years have had plans to put a gas station in, so they could take that same pole, they still have their rather large, you know, decent sized Walmart sign up there to top and then below that, they could put gas and then they could put a, they could put on a LED, you know, displaying the price of the gas for the day and those sort of things. And that would allow them to, to still, you know, because we're talking total signage on a pole, not, not just each sign that you have on there. So give them some flexibility or other businesses like that.
John, have you done any researches to what other cities might have as far as sizes, size restrictions?
I haven't gone back to look. I think the 200 came from one of them because that didn't change throughout this process that we've been working through. But, yeah, Randall, you, you weren't in on the forefront of this, but we looked at Richland, we looked at City Walla Walla, we looked at Leavenworth, I think there was one other. Yeah, and, you know, we pulled from different sections and I think this is probably the most convenient and user-friendly of the ordinances, some of the things that we looked at and least restrictive.
That gives me some, I guess, some comfort, knowing that, you know, some of these other cities have applied it already and businesses seem to be doing well with them. As I drive like to try cities, you know, so you see the big signs and whatever, so they're within what we would do and I'm more comfortable now knowing that that would probably be adequate in these size limits.
I have a couple of questions on other sections. This seems already.
Yeah, I'll make my final statement in a minute. There's no other comments, we can move on. But I guess I still like the idea of having a total in that regardless of the number of signs. My proposal that we'd increase from 200 square feet, if we go that direction, maybe 300 or 400 square feet and again, total, total area for the sign. That's my two cents and I'll leave it at that.
I was thinking about 200 square feet per side, but then as you said, you know, it could be a round circle or something, how do you figure that then? So I don't know.
I really feel we want to be business friendly and your statement about the Walmart and then their gas and their prices, to me, we need to leave room for that.
I guess I would support, you know, more, tie it, it's become more reasonable, I don't know how we do that in our business.
Going back to Mahoney's comment on overall signage or square, calculating based on all sides, I, the way, the intention is, is that you would have 400 square feet the way it's written. You just, we're just measuring one side of the sign. It may be a two-sided sign, but I'm just measuring the one side, we're not... Does that make sense?
I'm just wondering if we need to clarify on the definition or maybe that it's a two-sided side, you know, that they were measuring one side and that is the, but if we end up with a multi-dimensional sign, not just, you know, back to back, a cube or, then the total would be the, I guess, 400 feet or?
I think that's a good point. I think, I think the code needs to say that on a, on a two-sided sign, shall be calculated for one side of the sign in both instances. I mean, the wall sign one, projecting is probably pretty clear, but I think it's probably, I'll assume that on a pole sign, there's going to be two sides to it as well. But we can, we can clarify in both sections that we're talking about two-sided signs. And then that can get away from the triangular sign or the box, which I don't imagine you'd probably see why they would want to put signage facing a building, but.
So I have seen, I think it was in Spokane just a few weeks ago, in some commercial area, they had a box sign twirling around.
Yeah.
And it had, you know, four sides and I actually think that they were different. I don't know if there were four tenants or, or how wide, but, so somebody will probably end up coming at some point with something different than what we're used to seeing.
And I guess we might have to say, I'm sorry, you can only have a two-sided sign. I don't know.
And that works. All right. Brian, you wanted to move on, let's do it.
Just a couple of questions as we're reading the code. First question comes from 174030, General. Sections A and B, any zones... Section A and B, any zones admitted in this title or new zones created, no sign to be committed? I'm just wondering, I know this covers residential zones and business and commercial zones. I'm wondering whether the code also applies to other zones in the city?
Well, the commercial and business zones, I mean, I don't see it applying to any other outside of the... We have, there's a section that specifically addresses residential. We probably should add light industrial zones, although those are often included in the business zones. But we can clarify that.
Okay, I'm also thinking of schools, churches, apartment complexes, which are kind of residential, kind of commercial. I mean, I know they're owned residential, but they may wish to display the name of their building in it. Is that adequately covered in the residential section?
So churches and, you know, those sort of things are, those are, they're in a public reserve zone. And generally, they are, the underlying zone in most of those cases is a residential zone, or it could be a commercial zone. So when you have a PUD, or, excuse me, a public reserve zone, a PUD, the underlying zone would apply, so we would apply a residential zone, add a classification to that, particularly a district, or if it's a commercial district, then we would have that, those liberties there.
So, given that though, a lot of churches are residential zones, which means that then they would really restrict what kind of signage they have, correct?
Yes. So the residential section, I think, restricted down to, what is it, 30 square feet? And there was a height restriction, I think.
I'm thinking, for example, the sign was from Villas Church. They put it on the electronic screen, and I think there were some issues with brightness right along 12th Street there. I'm wondering how this code would apply to that sign, for example, if it's similar to that?
Well, if we applied, okay, so the way we have, if you look at the first part of 174040, in general, R60, R75, and RM, PUD zones. And then we have electronic illuminated signs, not prohibited, they're prohibited in residential zones. Pole sign is not exceeding 60 inches in height.
And the signs should not be permitted?
Yeah. They would be prohibited. So maybe we need to address, we could just address the public reserve districts and include them in the, in the business section, if we wanted to do that.
Okay, that would be more flexible. Also thinking of these signs, global outreach, all on large, you know, electronic stuff, and on that, it would be...
That is a light industrial zone.
How about a larger entity like the university? Would they only be allowed one sign in any of our campus, or would they be allowed signed buildings?
Their signage would fall under signage for buildings. So most of their signage is low, and then they, you know, they're directing people to...
Yeah.
And that would fall under, again, that would be in their public reserve zone, so if we include them in the business and commercial zones, that would give them some more flexibility.
And it would be one of the buildings then?
No, they have several parcels throughout that, so we'd base it on parcels. From, for their monument signage, I think it's insignificant enough that, I mean, we don't even put fire permits for those.
I like your suggestion, designing with a public reserve, like commercial, so you could...
Yeah, that'll cover all of the public, private schools, the university, and churches.
And churches, regardless of location?
Yeah, because they all have the overlying public reserves. So if we just mention the public reserve district, and include that under the signage and commercial. So what I'll do is probably add a section that's similar to the residential one, that lists all of the different codes or zones that are allowed.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, because it said the zones not mentioned in the section, the sign's not allowed. I noted a number of Texas zones that were listed. So I have a question on 174050. It says signs in business and commercial zones. Section G talks about LED signs. And I was curious what it meant when it said light rays from such signs shall sign only upon the sign, or on the property where the sign is located, and not spill over property lines. What does that mean? Because I can see the sign from the street, that would suggest that light rays are spilled over the property line.
Well, it's like the glare. Maybe we could say, measure the half-foot candle at the property line, and that's common terminology. This is just pulled out of, what called, to talk about LED signs and how they regulated them, so...
I think we do want to regulate the brightness, particularly if it's on a street, could distract drivers if the sign's too bright at night. I think we want to regulate that, but this language and that sort quite captures.
I wonder if there is some, some light, you know, some candle power or something, some measure that we could get maybe from a different city. Something that would, because you're right, I mean, just the fact that you see it, that means it's spilling off.
I mean, it could be struck from that section as well, I mean, other than the lights spill. I mean, signs don't generally produce a lot of light. I mean, they're not intended to light an area. They're intended to, they're either backlit, or they have a message that...
Yeah, that sign was too bright, the sign on 12th was too bright for a while. So I think it's important to provide guidelines to businesses that do wish to put in the sign.
So maybe there's some terminology regarding, I don't know how they measure LED light. And with, like, our streetlights, or parking lot lighting, our general requirement is that property line shall not exceed half a foot candle.
Okay.
But I don't know if that would really apply in this area, so I'll have to dig around, maybe talk to some suppliers and see if I can...
Sounds good, thank you.
I'd like to follow up with Brian's question. So I think when we solve the churches and schools, how about large apartment complexes? They usually have some sort of signage, and they're, if they're in a residential zone.
Those should fall under the multifamily, I want to, which is, yeah, so they're under... Hold them under residential section, so they can, they can put up a sign.
Would that include senior citizen housing, convalescent centers, nursing homes, whatever you want to call it?
It depends on what the zones are located in, but, you know.
Okay.
Would those facilities...
Whatever zone they're in.
Would those facilities be kind of like the schools, and are they in that category, or the...
Absurd.
I think most of ours are in, within PUDs, actually. And one on Myra is within, is part of the PUD for the villages. And one off of Larch is part of the PUD for, within PUD. So they're regulated by their CC and RS. And they're under a residential land use, so they would fall under the residential category of...
So one of the things that I would be concerned is that illuminated signs are not permitted. I think some of those facilities at least have some sort of monument sign that has some lights, so that you can read it at night and see where it is.
Residential area.
Yeah. Well, because, you know, it's the kind of thing that, you know, they're usually larger facilities, but somebody might be looking to go to this facility, to go visit somebody, et cetera. They're looking for the facility, and looking for that name.
Write that down?
In residential areas, we want to make sure that people aren't being kept awake by light, the lights of signs. I don't want flushing in my bedroom.
Fred?
Well, I'm just going to make a comment, just be aware, no matter how finely you tune this, it's not going to be perfect. Or it could get some problems somewhere, so... Try to fine-tune it to open up, so it's useful. It's a testing test for its functionality. So I could tune it, if you could, on the other end, and make sure that we have that.
All right, last chance, we'll probably get very much of this. All right, thank you for your patience. I know we have some public comment. Please, again, step up with a microphone and share your name and address, and share your thoughts, please.
My name's Dan Ward. I'm from Vancouver, Washington. And my father's had a B-Lite station here. He's been in business here since 1958. And I'm looking at after this, I'm going to be serious. I have six points I wanted to bring up, and try to keep it short, if you can. One I had, just a trivia question on, by the way, that new cars project, I just received a question. Build there beyond your town, just a quick little bit of things. A question that John may know, or maybe somebody here knows. The flags they've got right now, they've got the American flags down through town. They stop at 12th, and I'm wondering why that is. Does anybody know?
We have enough of them, and it came down to a matter of time for a public works group to... But we have enough of them, and...
There wasn't any, in other words, other than either time or money, it was, no other, in other words, it isn't a different zoning here, or anything like that?
No, no, we have all brackets on those poles to accommodate them.
So it's okay if we had to put a Confederate flag up there? Let's see. One question I had on your draft that you have is, John sent me a copy of this draft sign code, which I think is good, because it's straightforward and it's condensed, with the changes you made here. There was a comment made earlier on the historic and iconic signs. If signs identify with your conference or, you had a little more question than that. What's the criteria for establishing that?
Well, the, so there, we have a historic preservation commission, and it's, there's the national, there's national requirements, and then there's the state requirements through the Department of Historic Preservation. And generally speaking, in order to get a structure or an artifact declared historic, it needs to be 50 years older, 50 years or older. And then, is there an architectural, is it of a particular architectural style, or doesn't it have a history in the community, a significance? There are a number of factors, but, yeah.
Is it required both federal and state, or just state?
Just state.
And you have those warranties and...
We're just setting up our commission, so...
Okay. On the sign situation, I wanted to be involved. I must say, growing up here in College Place, I was disappointed that there wasn't more public input than I know that you guys have had here on this. And I've been in the business of commercial construction and signage and so forth, in Portland, Seattle, northwest area for 45 years. And it's a very unique situation, and like Mr. Duncan said, no matter what you do, you're going to have, you're going to have some issues. But signs are unique, and they're more standardized in bigger cities. We begin in the smaller cities, then there's a divergence of what people want. And you look at, I've done a lot of research in the last six months, on the weekends and evenings, on the history of College Place, and state regulations on signs and so forth, kind of come up to speak. Because we have some vested interests of designs. And one of the things that's kind of unique about signs, like I say, I know Dave Gorden was here a couple, two, three months ago, and we've been here, and that's about it. And that doesn't speak very well for the community. But you've got to understand that if you're in the business, and you've already got your sign, and you're okay, and you don't have any short-term plans, then you don't feel like you're going to spend the time to be involved with it. So what happens is, is that there's very few business owners, and it's usually only the long-term business owners that choose to become involved, because most of these people aren't going to be around for five years anyway. They're not looking at it long-term. And there's also the fact that, you know, if you have the sign you want, then you're just fine with them tamping down the regulations, because your potential competitors, both present or future, have to deal with what those things are. So you don't, there's a disingstanding to be too much involved in the promotion of the thorough flushing out of the issues, because of issues like that. I, coming up here as much as I have in recent years, there was mention of some of the signs, a lot of the small retail people here. But when I read the questionnaire that the city manager brought out, some good work, kind of getting a feeling of the neighborhood feeling of what people want in College Place. What are you looking for? And one thing that kept coming back was, they like, they want to preserve the small town. That's valuable, they want to preserve that. And that's the reason why it wasn't until 1945 that College Place was incorporated, and they got their first mayor, which I know, I remember. He, Walt Bunch, was a friendly competitor of my father's. He, Walt Bunch was a friendly competitor of my father's. I remember all those guys. And there was a big resistance in College Place, and apparently there still is, to preserve. You just don't want big brother and you don't want big government coming in and doing all those things. And so it was kind of interesting, heartwarming in a way to see that feeling still here. But there was also a lot of comments about people wanting, concerned about enhancement, job opportunities, new development, new, new opportunities and so forth. And if you really sit back and think, those are two conflicting, in a lot of ways, those are two conflicting goals. Now, you can do these controlled and so forth, which kind of is what we're talking about here with signs. Because that's kind of doing it with some restrictions and so forth. I will say, and I don't want to be too critical, but when you go down to College Avenue, there's a lot of signs that are real, blah signs, that just say basic stuff. It has the business name, it might have a phone number, it might not, but it isn't. But I think that, then we hear that one of the model cities was Leavenworth. Well, there ain't no Leavenworth, okay? And so what I'm suggesting is that in the sign situation, you take the thing and go with, in other words, get some flexibility. There's no reason, a lot of these little mom and pop places that are little shops, you know, maybe one or two employees, encourage a nice bar scene, something that's a little catchy or something. Some of those things are just, there's a lot of room for improvement there. The other thing that I would suggest, and I would be very respectful here, but I don't know, all too often in my interactions with all types of government, city, county, federal, state government, municipalities in our work, I find myself in a distinct minority as a lifelong business owner. And the people making the decisions have never been in business, but they're making the decisions for business. And I mean that very respectfully. But I, I think one thing that's important is that when, when making decisions on your sign code, that's something, was it 30 years maybe? I think in the eighties is the last time we did anything with signs?
We don't presently have a sign code.
At all?
At all.
But they had something in the eighties, didn't they?
We adopted our zoning code in 1984, which limited height.
Right.
And that's it, that's it.
Okay, yeah, very bare bones. Those were like 30 years ago, 30 plus years ago, almost 40 years ago. This will probably go for a long time. And look what happened in the last 20 years with Walmart and all this type of thing. Given what direction it's going to stay, solve, humanity is going to grow and expand. No doubt there's going to be another Walmart. There's going to be these national franchise companies, national retailers that have franchise operations. And I got to tell you, at my end of things, they take a long hard look at the, at the ability to, to advertise and, and signs are a big part of the friendliness of it. In my opinion, a comment was made that this is a very relaxed code. And I agree that most everything in that code is relaxed. I don't think that if you've been in business and you're, you know, where you've run a business for several years where it's more than just a little experience, that a 60-foot signage deal is as pretty, as a maximum? Not as a minimum, it's a maximum. That's not much of a sign. Just like down the street here at the Shell Station, that's not even where it's posted here, could it? You have to rip that out. Now granted, they're in there because it's before the code. But what happens when somebody wants to put another, another operation in there? Well, they can't, can't do it. So I, I think, I know that, of course, we know Leavenworth is not exactly, that's a trendy little tourist destination. And those people have really been innovative in signage. But I think that I would suggest that a review of some, I know of many cities of this size that have a more relaxed code. I guess my suggestion is, is take a long hard, see, there was a lot of talk about global signs or foresighted signs. It's like, yeah, there's a merit for that, but global sign, nobody's ever going to see more than face diameter of this thing here. If you go around, so it's the diameter, that times pi, and there you go. That's your surface area times two. That's your call. I think this though, I think that the maximum signage should be more than 60 feet. I think there should be some real life examples. Now, those get involved with what you feel comfortable would be acceptable. Find out, run the numbers on what that surface area is, and say, okay, that's fine. Because I noticed there was a lot of info about churches, well, we've got to get, they want to make sure we get this and that. But it's like, well, the businesses don't, the businesses do need it. If you have a vital commit, business community, you need to have good signs. They don't need to be huge, they don't need to be non-strategic. But I guess what I'm saying is, is either raise the 60-foot, or somebody made the comment that, you know, there was this very variance deal. And I read all about that, and that's correct. I personally think that if you don't raise it, you should have some variance besides making a business owner go, go through all the things, because it is that important to them. Signage for certain types of businesses is huge. So that, that I would suggest, in other words, through the planning commission or through the city council if someone says, you know, it's, there's a lot of reasons why they say, no, we don't want it, that's, that's enough. That's big enough. But there's also times when it's like, you know, he's got a point. Like he was, John used the example of somebody who had a, had a property and he fell into hard times and he started selling a lot, so, so golly gosh, I guess he just isn't going to get the signs now. We can give him a little minimum. Should, we, the city should be able to say, hey, they can get a sign, we can, we can help them here. In other words, they don't need some great big sign, but there's, there's no reason for that to happen. In a special situation, a property owner or a business owner should be able to have someone to go to without spending tens of thousands of dollars in attorney's fees and go to the city and plead their case. And if they lose, they lose, but at least have a realistic shot at it. And I, I think that could be fairly easily put together. Try to wrap it up here. I guess I, I, I've been involved in this type of thing for a long time. And I'd be more than happy to, I mean, it's a false assumption to say, to, to, oh, we're, we're going to change anything, everybody up. No, no, that's not true. I'd be happy to be in a number of cities that have a more relaxed policy, specifically on service area designs. I think the 30-foot is very reasonable and most everything else is certainly very reasonable. And then the only other question I guess I had, where are you folks, are you, I've missed a couple of these things. Where are you in the process on this thing, on your sign process?
Well, this is the fourth workshop. We held a hearing at one point. So we've met on this five different times. And we've had, last week I attended, I attended the farmer's market, had this brochure there.
It's well done, too.
So my proposal would be, or recommendation would be that we would move towards another hearing. That would be on the 19th of next month. But there are some changes that you guys may want to revisit this again, so.
Yeah. One thing I would like to say, so you don't take my, I made the comment 62 feet is too small. Without some trigger mechanism where someone can come in and say, hey, here's our situation and this is why I think it should make sense. My point is, well, what would it take? I think across the street there, pushing, I think about 80 square feet. So it's not that much, in other words, we're not talking. But inches matter when you're talking about signs. And I would say 85 to 90 would be a maximum, unless you develop some sort of trigger. 60 is fine if you have a way for a person to plead their case. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? Back to the question. Thoughts, comments?
I'm going to try to pull up one of the PowerPoints that we have, just that went up and down College Avenue and showed our existing signage. So we can kind of refresh ourselves for what we are dealing with existing. I know everybody wants to go home and go to bed, right?
I made a comment, if you were to fill this to 60, you have to fill it to 60.
I'm assuming total pool signs should not exceed 60 square feet in downtown mixed use.
Also, what I ask people to remember is, what we, what we're doing is making a recommendation to the city council. And it's the city council that has to adopt.
Yeah.
And they have periods too.
Experience, in most cases, if there's a recommendation, case the planning commission, city council would accept it.
So there's Andy's sign and I... It's really hard to get out there and try to measure these things because your tape measures start to fall over and so.
And that is downtown mixed use?
Yeah.
So what, what's a guest estimate on that one?
I have a couple of empty units in the room. You guys guess.
Mike, do you need to bring your survey equipment?
You're right on that. I mean, I, this is probably four by eight and, I don't know, three by five, two by six.
The lower sign is exactly four by eight.
This is four by eight?
Yes, that's four by eight.
The others?
Yeah, we're looking, we're looking at that as an option.
Yeah.
Planet same company. They make a smaller, a far bigger, something like that.
80 square feet or something like that?
You think 90?
Between the two?
Yeah. Let's see if we can find.
60.
That's close to 60.
Obviously it's been less.
It would be 92.
Certainly more than 64.
Yes. So there's the shell, I mean, yeah, that's...
Exactly six by 12.
Six by 12.
Exactly.
Okay. 70.
As was the old one before that.
Seems like something that's scalable with property size would be appropriate. Because you wouldn't want that big a sign in a small commercial business, but it, it looks great for a business, for a property that's on there.
Yeah. That would, that would be, that would not be, that would not make the new sign. So that's, that was my point on the service area. I think that is a well, a tasteful sign, but it won't work under the type and the code.
Yeah, and this is a community decision. I mean, this is, you know, what do you want your community to look like going forward? I mean, as Dan pointed out, you know, there are communities that do signage smaller and they do it well. Some businesses want bigger signs. But going big is not always better. I mean, you look at Leavenworth, I'm not saying that we're trying to go towards Leavenworth. We're not, we're not trying to create a varying community or any other themed community. But they do have smaller signage there.
Here's that same sign. What if, Dan, doesn't look like so tall? See, it makes it look real tall there, it's not.
So many feet.
I'm not saying it's bad.
For a square foot of land. I mean, the shell isn't, the building itself isn't very big, but the land.
I, you know, I still think, and I don't know if I've seen it before or not, but I kind of recollect that I read some sign code years ago that had some sort of trigger that allowed the size depending on the frontage. And I think, you know, like Andy's, like the gas station here, they have a big frontage, so the sign doesn't look totally out of place. And I can see the 72 square foot sign, maybe toning it down to 60 and it still would look good. But, but I, but at the same time, you know, if it was a 60 square feet that we're allowing and it's just a 50-foot wide lot and just says, you know, Al's Barber Shop, really big, it might really look out of place. And so I'm just kind of wondering whether, whether that's some, something we should explore.
Well, that's why we have this setback requirement. You had to have, the building had to have a setback in order to have, to do a whole sign. So that, you know, that would look very odd if there was a building five feet behind it, I think.
Well, this, I have a same photo of that same deal from another angle. That, that angle makes it look like that sign's a great bit. If you stand back and put it in perspective, it looks like it's the same height as the building. See, it, it's, it's, it's easy there.
Yeah.
You know, the perspective is different.
See, that building is not very big, but it's the lot and everything around it that makes it acceptable.
And that might, I mean, I think that would probably fall under the 60 square foot. I mean, it's a big sign, but it's not.
But that would be at least a six by 10 right there. If not, eight by 12 at least.
That doesn't look 10 feet tall to me, but.
No, eight by 12, eight by 12. See, if you take the top and the bottom of it, it's, it's all of that.
This is, this...
Where's my pointer?
This is a 10-foot sidewalk from the back of the curb like this right here. That's 10 feet.
But you see.
That is not 10 feet there.
Yeah, but you see, if you were to take that picture straight on, just like that picture of the Shell Station, made that sign look really big, and mine here makes it very, very tasteful. If you were to walk directly east where you were standing right behind that sign, you would not be able to say that as far as, as far as.
Well, just, I'm, we're, I'm just comparing. We have, we know exactly how wide this sidewalk is. It's 10 feet wide.
But if you, if you.
That's not 10 feet wide. They're both, they're both in the same plane, parallel with each other, or perpendicular with each other.
Well, I've made my living at this for a long time. I've put my.
Just a question, I wonder, I get out of the new here, so I'm just getting up to speed, but I'm wondering if, if the chances that the downtown mixed use is aiming towards a particular type of look? Kind of a Main Street look, whereas we have a number of larger existing businesses? And so there's, there's a little tension between those two. Is that, is that?
Well, I mean, the downtown mixed use definitely is heading in a different direction than, than the, you know, our, our downtown mixed use does not allow for this type of, well, I would say that you could do this bank. would say that you could do this bank, but the, because it doesn't have the parking in front, but you move along to, let's see. I mean, this is what we're looking for, we're looking for having buildings up, up close to the right way. So I, you know, in new development, the pole sign is not going to be a part of their, their design.
So technically, as I see it, and that because of the setback requirement, given the new direction for the, the requirements for, what do you call that?
The projecting sign?
Well, yeah. So the other thing that we did, we did see from the gentleman from the university, Washington State University, came and gave us a presentation on kind of some.
Design standards.
Design standards, that's what I'm looking for. So the design standards require the buildings to be basically right up front. So just by that, when those get adopted, most of those pole signs would be legal, or you couldn't put them in.
Well, they'd be non-conforming signs, but we stay.
Well, if they're there, but if you're going to build, if you're going to build a new building like this, then where do you put your pole sign to camp?
Yeah, you, that, you won't have them.
Right, so you won't have it. So in some degree, if, if this other thing goes, and gets adopted, the design standard just starts creating this look, it already then addresses some of the issues with the design code, too. You end up with more.
So our sign code that we've proposed here would be acceptable? That's what we want.
Is that a question or a statement?
That's a question, that's a question.
I, I would like to say something, the comment we had here just a minute ago.
Dan, please step up to the mic so we can catch you. Thank you.
Yeah. It was a good example. If you're not used to, if you're not look, used to looking at things, saying, okay, how tall is that, how wide is that? And you're looking up there in the air, and you're, in your mind, it's like, it's right here in front of you, and that's not six feet. Stick it twenty, thirty feet up in the air, and all of a sudden it gets real small. I'm just telling you. These, these dimensions that say, well, that's, that's okay, well, it's bigger than you think it is, that's what I'm trying to tell you. And so that goes to my original point, that, that you're, what you're thinking of in your mind's eye is something that's here in front of you, and you're thinking, well, that, that's reasonable, they don't need more than that. Stick it up in the air to the deal. It's not, it's a small sign, very small sign.
Yeah, I think that the golf bank is probably close, Shell Sign's probably a little larger than what our, our current code would allow. And, and my understanding from conversations we've had, I think the general direction is that we want to create a different environment than what we see with, um, including the Shell Station. Even if we maintain that, I don't think that what we're proposing here is drastically different than what we have out there. I could be convinced otherwise, but I'm pretty comfortable with what we have here and moving forward with it to council. Certainly, you're welcome to share your position to the council, it's our recommendation, it's not mine. So I guess I propose that we maintain what we have here, and if there are anything to the contrary, if you do have feelings about that, please share us.
I'm good. Is there, are there standard sign sizes? Or is it, at this point, pretty easy to get assigned any size? In other words, if we're going to pick up a point, you know, be it sixty or seventy-two, or less, if we're going to pick a point to call a limit, it'd be nice to know.
My understanding is that they're all, I mean, they're all customizable in size, but Dan might have some information on that.
Want to share on that? I'm standard sizing.
Standard sizing signs?
Sizing signs, they can be anything you want, but there's no, generally, that type of sign, well, the reader board signs, the digital signs go four by eight, five by ten, six, let's see, four by eight, five by ten, six by twelve. That's the generic sign you've been ordered over the counter, but you can order anything you want, so I wouldn't necessarily go to a cookie cutter. You know, I mean, the business owner's going to want, like Les Schwab out there, they've got a long narrow, just look out like this, and it's long, you know, so whatever you want.
All right, John, I think we stick with what we have here. I do want to ask you to follow up on what Mr. Brenner's proposed on scalability for a lot of sites, not that we have to incorporate them, maybe you can share any of that with us on research from other city plan codes that have scalability based on frontage length or, I know that we've addressed that to some extent through setback. I can still see it occurring where we have the setback requirements, but there's still narrow lots as far as frontage width. So I think that's still a possibility under our code. I don't know that we have to resolve it, as Scott has alluded to, or anything, but.
Well, I would, I can follow up on that, I would say that it's probably would further complicate the code in terms of trying to provide, you know, advice to.
May well.
The applicant. And then going back to the College Avenue theme, I don't necessarily think that, you know, if you've got five hundred feet, that it would be a great thing, they wouldn't bother you to have a sign that maybe is even bigger than what the Shell Station has right now.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, I'll see what I can, I'll see what I can find, I don't know if I'll be able to come up with anything or find anything on that, but. And so I feel fairly comfortable that I can make the revisions that we talked about tonight, and then advertise, and hold a public hearing, which would be at the September nineteenth meeting. So there would be another opportunity at that meeting for the public to make comment on this. And then it goes, probably, it'll fall, it probably would be until October, let's look here. I would say probably, hmm, it's going to be October, is that? Somebody's in my calendar, it's on my phone, it's not showing anyone the, hmm, there's council meetings here. Here we are. The tenth, October tenth would likely be the, where we get it before council for final adoption. And they, the council may or may not open for additional public comment, or it's up to the discretion of the mayor and council.